All right, welcome everybody to Grand Forks City Council meeting for Monday, December 5th, 2022. Could we get a roll call please Candy?
Wygo.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
Forum.
All right, on to item 1.2. We've got a special treat today. We've got a class. It's Ms. Winger's class. I guess it's for the Grand City's Children's Choir. And not only are they going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, they're going to sing us Christmas song for us. So I think we're all excited for that. And you guys are all looking good. So let's get the show on the road. And you guys can all get up here and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's poco voce.
Poco voce.
See, I wasn't quite sure, so I didn't bother trying to mess it up. All right, who's going to kick us off here? Okay.
Georgia stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I beg to boast any bubbles. Instead of singing our Christmas song, what we're going to do is go to a song that we did at our program a few weeks ago, our Grand City's Children's Choir program. It's called Cucaburra. It was written by a lady who was an Australian, but an American lady named Audrey Snyder arranged it for children's choir. And so we'd like to share that with you tonight.
Cucaburra sits in the old gum tree. Merry, merry, king of the bushes, ye. Ah, cucaburra laugh. Cucaburra glad your life must be. Cucaburra sits in the old gum tree. Cucaburra sits down the old gum tree. Talk of the cumin, see the cumin. Cucaburra sings, cucaburra sings. Cucaburra leaves some there for me. Cucaburra sings, sit in the old gum tree. Cucaburra sings, cucaburra sings. Cucaburra sings songs for me.
Cucaburra, cucaburra. Cucaburra, cucaburra. Cucaburra, cucaburra. Cucaburra, cucaburra. Count cucaburra counts. Count cucaburra counts. Count cucaburra counts on tree. Count the monkey, he can't see. Count cucaburra counts. That's not a monkey. That's not a monkey. That's not a monkey. That's me. That's me. That's me.
Do we want to have the kids stand for the picture?
Do we do that?
Yeah. Oh, didn't forget anybody. Can you squeeze in a little bit?
Maybe I'm not going to get everybody. Let me step back way farther.
Oh goodness, there we go. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Very nice. Very nice.
As Mayor Botczynski said, my name is Anella Winger. I am honored to represent the Grand City's Children's Choir tonight. Thank you, first of all, for this opportunity to perform. It's always exciting to be able to share our talents and our hard work with other people. The Grand City's Children's Choir is an organization that consists of four choirs involving students from grades three through nine. Our mission is to offer young people the experience of musical artistry and excellence through choral singing in a youth-centered atmosphere. Our goal is to inspire excellence through our singing and the choices we make. 162 singers from Grand Forks, East Grand Forks and surrounding towns are involved in our choirs this year. The choir that you've seen here tonight, as we were saying, is called poco voce, which is Italian for small voices. And I am honored to be their director. Our singers may be the youngest singers in our organization, but they are not short on enthusiasm and skill. In addition to the choirs, GCCC has a mentoring component that involves singers in grades 10 through 12 who have graduated from our program. These mentors are called Graziosi Guidaris, which is Italian for gracious guides. GGs volunteer their time and talent to assist art singers and directors, while they also get a chance to receive training in leadership, personal development, and musical teaching skills. This year, we have 19 high school students serving as GGs with our choirs this year. GCCC is fortunate to have donor support to ensure that all singers who give a successful audition are able to participate. Organizations like the Community Foundation, the Park District, the Myra Foundation, and the Julie Taylor Endowment support our singers and assist us with our operational costs. In addition to our very supportive base of parents that you see here tonight, we have two additional staff members who joined us. Ms. Kelsey Ween serves as our poco voce GG coordinator and my assistant, and Mrs. Roxanne Gessler serves as our very capable collaborative pianist. Those of us involved with the Grand City's Children's Choir strongly believe that our organization is a beautiful example of how citizens can work together to create something grand that enriches our community. And I'd like to now give our singers a chance to introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Malachi, and my favorite sport is football and baseball.
Hi, my name is Nelson, and my favorite activity is poker cards.
Hi, my name is Mira, and my favorite thing about poco voce is having fun with new friends, is making new friends and having fun with old friends.
Hi, my name is Madeline, and my favorite thing about poco voce is the teacher is my grandma.
My name's Maria, and my favorite activity is cheer at Grace Academy.
Hi, my name is Lydia, and my favorite thing about poco voce is that we work together.
Hello, my name's William, and my favorite thing about school is seeing my friends.
Hi, my name is Pierre, and my favorite thing about poco voce is meeting new friends and singing.
Hi, my name is Eliana, and my favorite thing about poco voce is seeing friends and singing.
Hi, my name is Emily, and my favorite activity is climbing everything.
Hi, my name is Ayanna, and my favorite thing about poco voce is my teacher.
Hi, my name is Alyssa, and my favorite activity is art.
Hi, my name is Rosalie, and my favorite thing at school is math.
Hi, my name is Lily, and my favorite sport is basketball.
Hi, my name is Zoe, and my favorite subject in school is music.
Hi, my name is Peyton, and my favorite subject in school is art.
Hi, my name is Corinne, and my favorite subject in school is math and music.
Hi, my name is Leah, and my favorite subject in school is reading.
Hi, my name is Eleanor, and my favorite sport is hockey.
Hi, my name is Ruth, and my favorite thing about choir is seeing old faces.
Hi, my name is Hallie, and my favorite sport to do is basketball.
Hi, my name is Duncan, and my favorite subject in school is reading.
Hi, my name is Grayson, and my favorite sport is football.
Hi, my name is Monica, and my favorite activity is reading.
Hi, my name is Vivian, and my favorite thing about poco voce is singing.
Hi, my name is Michaela, and my favorite sport is volleyball.
And thank you again for having us here tonight.
Thank you. They're so well behaved. I have a hard enough time wrangling three. How do you manage that whole crowd there? Well done. Yeah. All right. Poco voce, perfect. Moving on to 1.3, mayor's announcements. Don't have too many today. Spent eight hours in the car getting to Bismarck and back today, working with some legislators and trying to get some more natural gas out to Grand Forks. So that's really all the announcement I have. So we will move on to two citizen comments.
Craig Spicer?
Give him a moment.
City Council, Grand Forks. Anyone on the city, if anyone on the city council with any morals, common sense, respect for our country, and/or the city, have an ounce of patriotism in them, should very easily understand that the Fu Fang corn plant that you brought to us, or any other CCP Communist Party company, should never have had a chance in hell of establishing themselves in our country. Through this manipulated, forced annexation process by the city, you will jeopardize many businesses on the north side of town that have provided services for up to 50 years, some of them. You will put a hardship on many of those businesses for the sake of bringing in a communist country that now we know runs every business and every entity, whether it is in this country or any other country. We need to stand up now and let everyone know that our city council made a mistake, and they should shut this project down now. No matter what the cost, or what the process, we need you to close it down. And that's where we stand.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer. Mr. O'Donnell, please.
Hi, my name's Danny O'Donnell. And I'd like to talk to you about the snowmobile access to the greenway that's been brought up. We just moved to a new place a year ago that my, I am right on the greenway. And before, we were close enough to the river where the noise from the snowmobile was pretty bad. And we had neighbors that would run up and down the streets with snowmobiles and four-wheelers. Talked to the police about it. The police went down, talked to the individuals, said they could not be sighted unless they actually saw the individual violating, riding on the streets and everything. I've seen tracks, four-wheeled tracks, this summer on the greenway next to my house. Last year was the first year I've been in there. I've seen snowmobile tracks on it. I don't think it's right that we should have to do that. As a taxpayer, we maintain the greenway for everybody's enjoyment. I don't see how you could ever police them on the greenway. Lack of snow, they're going to tear it up. With the speed that they go, I'm quite sure that somebody with skiers, snow skiing, or walking is eventually going to get hit. I don't think it's a good idea, and I think that we should scrap this idea before it ever gets started. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carlson, please.
Thank you. I'll try to be very quick here. The innocence of those kids is overwhelming, and it's hard to get up here after that, to say some of the things that I have to say that need to be said. The first thing that I would like to say, that it's unbelievable with the things that are going on in China, that you continue. It's, I feel like our city, our city council is a laughingstock of the entire nation. I'm just appalled. And I see that Mr. Ween and Mr. Sandy are online. And pardon me for saying this, but where's Mr. Truderas? Why does he never come to these meetings? It's a bunch of puppets. Everybody's doing his bidding. I just, it just floors me. You know, I haven't come to the council for a few weeks, but, which actually has been a great relief. And I haven't even followed up by watching any council meetings, which has, boy, it's better than the psych ward. What a relief that that is to get away from the council for a while. Few questions that I have, and I have asked you, Mr. Kwame, many times, the forced, the Uyghur Forced Labor Prevention Act, has Fu Fang applied for that? They did indicate February 22nd of this year that they will be filing those forms. Has that been filed?
I'm not aware.
Pardon me?
I said I'm not aware if that's been filed. They would not be able to import any products until they've been cleared on that, so.
Okay, okay. That's just another thing as far as due diligence. I'm not sure what you're waiting on with that. I know we don't have a building built, but if you look at that we're going through CFIUS, and we're going through these reviews, and we're making sure that we're vetting everything, and trying to make everything is on the up and up, that's another part of this. So even if that's something, if they can't pass that, if they don't get that exemption, and Mr. Truderas did say on February 22nd, they do import, and they will continue to import products from China. So just be aware of that when you look at due diligence that you're doing with this particular company. ARPA funds, I was looking back at a previous email from you, Mr. Phelan, when we were talking about the ARPA funds that are being used for this. And I know that there is $3 million of ARPA funds that are being, or have been requested from Grand Forks County to be used for the wastewater treatment plant. You indicated in the email that there's over 3 million that the city has in ARPA funds that are going to be used for this project. So that's a minimum of six to seven million dollars in COVID relief funds, essentially, which when you look at our community, and you look at the number of small businesses that have been forced to close, you look at the number of hardships that families that have small businesses have encountered through this period of the pandemic, and you're going to spend six to seven, well, minimum, that's just minimum, six to seven million dollars on Fu Fang. And I also am looking at some other avenues where we've got those public funds going. And I think about these poor businesses that have gone under, and all these businesses that have closed. And I did look back at a previous meeting, and I see that they are being offered loans with interest. That's very nice of the city to do that. Within the development agreement, it indicates in Exhibit 3.2.3, that within 90 days of signing the development agreement, again, that was signed February 22nd, Fu Fang must provide a site plan, a schematic layout with details of anticipated building footprints, locations, site parking, everything that they need to provide. We have requested that footprint. We have requested the schematic of the designs and the buildings, and where those are going to be going on to that property. We've got, we've got nothing on that. With, with the letter, Mr. Weber, you know, as is probably well-known, I did request the UND emails of yours, where there was a communication between yourself and Altru, as well as UND regarding the Blue Zone projects. And it came to you trying to work with them, and you were going to let them know what was happening behind the scenes. And once you could get enough yes votes, that you would put it before the council, making sure that it was going to be passed that time, because the previous time before the council, it did not pass. Mr. Sandy was poking fun at me for not knowing about politics, saying that a whip, because as you commented on that, it was a whip, and it was a comment of putting pressure on the rest of the council to get a yes vote. I just want you to know that your whip, and your whip, and your whip are the people of this community. We are the people that you should look to, to be guided in your decision making.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson.
Mark Peterson?
Mr. Peterson, please.
Good evening, mayor and councilman. My name is Mark Peterson with Peterson Construction. My parents started the company in 1950. You know, so we've been in business for 72 years in this community. And done a lot of different projects. We built the addition at City Hall in 1995, and renovated this room that we were in. A lot of people don't know that, but that's a fact. And we've done other projects, you know, in the area. And I'm just very disappointed in the city lately, because I received a letter in October. Actually, I have nine parcels that were annexed in the area on the north end of town. And I was told, in this letter, it was a notification stating that we might be responsible for, or Peterson Construction would be responsible for these additional special assessments if Fu Fang was not to develop into an actual project. And they gave me a range, it was from the mayor's, or Marine Storestead with the county auditor. And there were nine letters, because we own nine parcels in that area. And it gave me a range of the, of the amounts of specials for this particular phase that I believe is responsible for the Zaberal's work that is being done right this minute, or right now. And I've got quite a few different issues. I'd probably have to shorten it by the five minutes comment section. But I just really feel like this letter is, I know it was meant and indicated to be as a notice, but I feel like I'm being extorted by the city of Grand Forks, because if I go against Fu Fang, you know, I might end up paying this, what turns out to be as possible $67,000 for this particular phase. I'm told in the letter that there was a second phase that's going to be handled for maybe the lift station for the sediment pond or retention pond. I just feel that the city shouldn't be doing project when, I was told that things were going to be held back for a while and stopped, any work on site for the Fu Fang project. And Zaberal's is going big guns, you know, making this retention pond. And I just don't think that's a good thing for the city to be doing that, when, you know, we don't know if it's going to go ahead. Why is the city doing this work for no reason? I have no reason to have that retention pond. Spicer, TriSteel, all these businesses that pay taxes over the years, and ourselves since 1950, do not need a retention pond behind our office. It's just not needed. And I'm just really disappointed in the city management. And, you know, I don't have a whole lot of other comments to make. So I just, I think it should all be reviewed more closely. And I think you've got some good comments that people have made. I know they're, they, well, I'll just be short, because I think that's all I need to say. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Hello. Thank you for the time. And I've been here before. And you know that timer, it's very childish. I wish you'd grow up, but I don't think there's a chance of that. You people are supposed to be a council. You don't counsel. You got a predetermined decision before you ever sit down. You know, there's, you're either part of the problem, or you're part of the solution. In this case, you are the problem. You know, it's not about China, it's about communism. Seventy-five percent of Americans feel that China is their biggest adversary. And you people are backing them. Your own people show just how shallow you are in knowledge. And you know, I don't like to use the word stupid, but I was on the radio with Les, and I told him, the mayor, the city council, and Dosted, and Todd cannot possibly be that stupid. And then I get this text, which shows evidently I'm wrong. "Mr. Kadlec, I must tell you, I find your approach confusing. You preach about having, being kind, and following the word of the Lord. Then you call the council members stupid. Those seem to be contrary messages. And speaking frankly, it's not kind. But no, I said you cannot possibly be that stupid. But of course, that genius you got working for you there, turns around and he proves that's the case. Because he says, I called you stupid. Now, if you can't understand that, I can explain it to you. And you know, the rest of it, I can explain it to you. But you get a much better understanding explanation out of these books. And I don't know if you guys ever seen one before, and you might not want to touch it. You might burn. But I brought a couple on here. I'll bring you more. And I would advise you to spend a little bit of time in that. Scientifically, they have proven that if you spend three or more days a week reading out of this book, it will actually increase the way your brain works towards knowledge. And you know, there's a big difference between knowledge and wisdom. Wisdom is only found here. You have none. So I'm afraid that you need that word. A cup of wisdom is worth more than an ocean of knowledge. With wisdom, you can have all the knowledge at your fingertips without ever having to acquire it anywhere else. It's so easy to see what's going on here. You guys are being duped by the Chinese again. You know, the book tells you, the deception. Who do you think's operating the communism? Satan. They have the same symbol, the dragon, the symbol for China and for Satan. Satan is the one that deceived the whole world. But they turn around, the Chinese deceive it too. Because the truth of the matter is, they told you if they didn't get started this year, they were going to pull out. Their sale ain't there. And where is Truderas, you know? What a joke. You know, what he's doing is laying you all out to be ironed. And you know, Mr. Mayor, you're not going to go anywhere politically. None of you people are. What have any of you accomplished? These people have built businesses over years and years. What has any of you accomplished? And I'm sorry, Brandon, you're not going to go nowhere thanks to this, because everything is going to fall for a nut. What did I tell you months ago about Bitcoin? You see what happened? It's so easy to see. I walk around with my eyes wide open. The truth of the matter is, if this project ever happened, the Chinese would not be able to hire employees, because you can't even get people to run Arby's. Arby's. And they'd bring in two hundred employees from China and all two hundred would be CCP. And if you don't know what CCP is, please look it up. The communism. Communism is the opposite of freedom. You know, you pledge allegiance to a flag. It's a republic. Please start treating it as such. Cause a republic, you have a council that actually counsels. And you know, if you're not gonna begin counseling, please resign because you don't belong here. Cause this is a sham. It's a shame and it's a disgrace. There's people all over the United States that contact us during the week. Please, we're watching you. You know, the whole nation looks after. You know, and the whole nation is watching. And Brandon, you're not gonna go nowheres with this kinda resume, man.
Thank you, Mr. Kadlec.
You're welcome.
Sheila Spicer.
Ms. Spicer, please.
Sheila Spicer, Grand Forks. I'm gonna read part of Jody's that she ran out of time. And deals do not, to not protest annexation or illegal, no envoy. State law and township law extortion exhibit number three, two, three. That's something you would know. All right. I'm, I've got just very simple things. Um, I've had a month of sitting at home and looking through things and digging up a whole lot of stuff over here. The one thing I did find was, um, I did call, oh, I'm sorry. I did call, um, the water control quality people in Bismarck and I asked them if you guys had gotten a permit for that lake being built in back of our shop. It is literally a lake. It's the most stupid thing I have ever seen. We're gonna put umbrellas up there and we're gonna have a party when that lake is built because it's that big. But I wanna know, did you get, it said, "Project will be required to submit a construction stormwater pollution prevention plan prior to any site disturbance." Sherry, I want that pulled up tomorrow when I come to your office. All right? Did you do it? Is it done? It's done?
That's not, Ms. Spicer, that's not something that I deal with.
Well, whoever deals with it, I wanna get hold of them. I want it, I'm picking it up tomorrow from you guys. This is what I was told by the water quality people, that you have to have this done before you touch that project. And another thing, this is what I found when I was looking through some of my paperwork. "Good day when Foudy rejected the suit." When we enter in agreements or contracts, those are not conditioned by the citizens of Grand Forks. And that is just part of having elected you guys. Very sad. Feelin said, "It's for South China Morning Post." There you go. I wish we hadn't elected you people.
Thank you, Ms. Spicer.
Roland Reimers.
Mr. Reimers, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Before I get started, Merry Christmas to you all and the audience too. I guess we're in the Christmas season here. And I'd like to give a quick report, report on, uh, two things this evening. Uh, one, the, uh, problem with train blockages. As you know, we've, uh, had that problem for some years and, and because of the, uh, train block, uh, big train incident back in the tenth of October, uh, I've been keep, keeping a careful eye on the trains. And I'd like to, uh, announce our Christmas gifts from the railroad seems to be. In the last thirty days, I haven't spotted one train over ten minutes. So, they're doing good. I hope that's their permanent way of operating. I mean, we don't mind a little lockage once in a while because of necessity, but, uh, it's been a marked improvement. And I've gotten words back from the community too that they've observed this also, that it's been really improved. Uh, there's also a, uh, slightly different development, uh, as far as the, uh, ability of, uh, states and localities to regulate trains. There currently is a case before the North, uh, the US Supreme Court. It's a California case that deals with the dormant interstate commerce clause, which could, uh, eventually affect our ability to regulate train blockages and things like that involved in interstate commerce. Uh, that's been argued before the US Supreme Court and, but they haven't made a decision on that. And it doesn't deal with railroads, but does deal with the dormant interstate commerce clause. Uh, and it's a case out of California. Uh, the other thing I'd like to talk about briefly, uh, I'm a little bit concerned by the, uh, investigation on the Grand Forks Police Department on the, uh, poor use of body cameras, uh, during incidents. Uh, as you recalled, in the tenth of October, uh, when the train was stopped, uh, for blocking, uh, Forty Second Street for more than twenty-four minutes, uh, which violated the city ordinance, uh, that the, uh, seven officers showed up at this incident. Now, uh, Grand Forks policy, as signed off by our chief, uh, Mark Nelson, is that when you go to a scene of a, uh, incident, you turn on your body camera, you keep it on till the end of the incident. If for any reason you have to turn that body camera off, you have to document that, why you turned it off. None of this happened. Of the seven officers who showed up at the scene, only four turned on the body cameras. Of those four, three turned them off early. In fact, I was, one of the, the arresting officer, you got ten minutes of video of him, of him sitting in the squad car going to the scene. He steps out of the squad car, first thing he does, turn off the video camera. And he was the arresting officer. What, what do we, uh, and that we allow something like that? Uh, secondly, uh, when going through the, uh, various police files of these videos that were put in evidence, they're controlled by the property division of the police department, uh, a number of them have been modified. I'm not sure what modifications, uh, were done, but it's against state law. It's a classy felony to change evidence. Classy felony, five years in jail. You don't tamper with police evidence. I haven't found out exactly what was changed on this, but it's definitely in the record that these were modified several days after the incident. And I'm concerned about that. And, uh, what am I, hang on. I'm also concerned, you know, this, uh, we had seven officers there. The train conductor and the engineer were interviewed extensively, uh, by up to four officers. And you could see this on the video cameras in the squad cars, but there was not one second of any recording of what those, uh, conductors and engineers saying. These are the only two witnesses other than myself who were at the scene. And, but there's no videos. If this was in Minnesota, state law in Minnesota would require them to record any of this conversation with the witnesses, but they didn't. And I think that shows a, a lack of training and responsibility in the police department. I think things need to be improved. Uh, any questions? Other than that, I'm done. With that, Merry Christmas to all and see you all next year.
Thank you, Mr. Reimers.
Sean Becleire.
Mr. Becleire, please.
Good evening, Council. Glad to be here again. Um, please don't forget the timer. Mr. Bochinsky requested to me to address why I'm not a competitor or competitor. And my email, I said, "That's your nickel, not mine." So, I'll be more than happy to explain why I'm not a competitor. Um, I am a investor in Progo Plant in Wapton, North Dakota Corn Wet Mill, roughly a hundred and twenty-five miles from here. There's been some, uh, there, they produce high fructose corn syrup, fifty-five and forty-two. For those who are not familiar, if you drink Coke Pepsi, that's corn sugar, that's fifty-five. The forty-two product winds up in jams and jellies, um, also sweet and sour sauce. So, that's the use of the product there. So, that would be a completely different market than what Fu Fang, cause they plan to produce amino acids for livestock feed. So, the second thing to be a competitor would be the corn origination. Would this plant source the corn from the same area as the existing plant in Wapton, North Dakota? And the answer is, is, is absolutely not. I, I've looked at the numbers. You can also do a third-party study. Right? I take this rather personally because after one of the meetings, um, Mr. Sandy called me a liar because he felt I was misrepresenting myself. And the reason why I'm concerned about the plant after a meeting. So, I have a very simple solution to this. I'll be more than happy to pay for the study. It's forty thousand dollars. But I'm not into licking stamps and mailing letters. If it comes back, right, that I'm not a competitor from that plant, you know, write me back my check for forty thousand dollars plus another two hundred thousand. Right? I'm serious about this. Right? And if it doesn't, right, I'll write you a check for a quarter million, billions. I really struggle with the city council, the importance of this corn basis study. One of the things you're emphasizing is how it's gonna raise the price of the corn in the area. It absolutely will raise the price of the corn in the area. There is, there's companies that are qualified to do this, much like appraisal on a house, to do this. You get an R squared of ninety percent plus on these situations. For example, I explained earlier, we're involved in Hankins in North Dakota. On the board there, we built the plant. They anticipated it'd be five point two cents would raise the corn basis when the plant was built.
Sorry, sir. Is this still about your defense about why you're not a competitor?
Yes.
Oh, it sounded like you were, I'm sorry. Thanks.
No, no, if it, I'm trying to explain why I'm not based on past history. If you have a plant that's thirty miles from Wapton, North Dakota, right, I served on the board there, also as a shareholder in this one, it only raised the, the price up to the corn four cents. Does that help clarify why I'm not a competitor? Or is there any questions on that issue? I, I sent emails earlier on. Anything you have a question on, be more than happy to do that. This, this is a very objective thing. It's not a subjective argument. I don't know any corn wet mills that are built that didn't do this study and be honest with the citizens. So, I'm gonna do with that, I'm gonna move on again to, uh, the development agreement and task orders. Why I don't think that actually protects the citizens of Grand Forks. I would put it this way. Do you know the difference between a smart due diligence and intelligent due diligence? Smart due diligence, you have, right, qualified people asking the questions. Intelligent due diligence, you have smart people asking and answering the questions. You don't have that in your existing development agreement. Number one thing, there's, oh, I got a list of eight here. I'll go through them letter quickly. CFIUS review. That should've been the number one thing you did here. Why? Cause if CFIUS says it's not gonna happen, you wasted all this time, energy and money going forward. Had you had a qualified attorney from the get-go, they would advise you, CFIUS should be your first stop. Right? You get into negotiations in these contracts too. Have any of you had professional negotiation training? Have any of you heard of Carass? Have any of you heard the book, "Don't Split the Difference"? Have any of you familiar with the Harvard Business Review? I see a bunch of blank stares. I'll give you the first two rules of negotiation for me. Rule number one is don't negotiate. Know what rule number two is? Don't forget rule number one. It's not that difficult. You go to Fu Fang.
You gotta, if you wanna wrap up, Mr. Becleire, please.
Like I said, I sent you the email. I'm gonna finish my points. I will wrap up.
Okay.
I've got things that are important to tell you why your contract's not protecting you. Had you did that, right, and they wanted submitted to review, Fu Fang wanted, wanted to review, none of us would have wasted any of this time and effort. You didn't do that. Number two on my list of things that you should've did is took a tour of the plants in China. It's crazy. They showed you a competitor's plant in Iowa. Who in their right mind would buy a home when they show you a competitor's home? They're over a billion dollar market cap. Why didn't just part of the agreement ask them to go to China to see their plants? Number three on the list is Uighurs. This is a real thing to people. They have a plant located in the province where Uighur is an issue. Wouldn't you think you'd make that a requirement over in China, to see on the ground, boots on the ground, to see for yourself? You chose not to do that. I just, it's beyond me. Why would you do that? Common sense says, right, they haven't completed the Uighur review, right, forced labor. They can't bring any product into the country. They've known to do this since February of this year. They haven't got it done. What does that tell you? They're probably hiding something.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Becleire. We're past the five minutes. Appreciate your, your time and coming here today. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate if you keep your words there. Your word, two things. You said they're gonna invade China, right? You wouldn't go forward with this. It's on their five-year plan, the ten-year plan to take over China.
Mr. Becleire, your time's finished, please. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
That's all the comments I have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lundmark. Moving on to three awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
Future soybean crushing facility introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Feelen. You wanna take this one? We might have to switch mics over here. It's kinda giving some feedback.
Mayor Bochinsky and members of city council, I'm honored to be here. I'm always honored to be your city administrator, uh, on your behalf. And, uh, this evening, we have a, a really good announcement for you. Uh, this evening, I'm gonna call on Keith Lund to introduce, um, the developer, um, for the soybean crushing facility. And then we do have a presentation. I just wanna give you a heads up. Um, working, um, as we always do, obviously, on the, our regional EDC works on these projects, brings it to the city. And a lot of these agri-business developments, uh, require the city, um, to interface from a, a utility perspective. So, just so, so you know, for background, we have had, uh, meetings with city department heads that would relate to the development of this particular, um, uh, development, you know, from planning and zoning to the water to public works, engineering and the like. So, we have done that in advance. Um, we also have met, uh, had representatives from Faulkner and Ry Township at our meetings. Agacy Rural Water, because we're on the fringes of where the city has developed. In this particular case, we've also have followed up with the Grand Forks County and the Grand Forks School District as part of this, uh, development. Um, what, after you get done with, um, the presentation, what, what we are planning to provide you is at the next committee hold meeting, we would come back and, and present that we wanna move forward with the development agreement, um, as part of this development in a similar way that we've worked on, uh, other developments to include, uh, the aforementioned, uh, Fu Fang USA development. So, this project is a little bit different, but it's more of the same than it is different than the Fu Fang. Obviously, we're gonna be talking about soybeans and not corn, uh, but I think it's gonna be, um, similar. Um, as Mr. Lund introduces the project, uh, we have had, uh, several conversations with Mr. Egan from Epitome Energy. And so, like we have with, uh, the previous project and future projects, whether it's Northern Plains Nitrogen or others, we'll follow a similar course of action with you. So, with that, I'd hand it over to our, my colleague, Keith Lund, to introduce the project and, and Mr. Egan.
Mr. Lund.
Good evening, Mayor Bochinsky and members of the council. Uh, Mr. Feelen, thank you for the introductions. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to, uh, share in this announcement. Uh, Grand Forks Region Economic Development Corporation, it's our really mission to work with partners such as the city of Grand Forks to expand economic opportunity in the region. Um, and one of our leading areas of investment and economic opportunity as we've seen in the last several years and last several months is agri-business. We're really excited about the opportunity to, uh, bring Mr. Dennis Egan, who is the founder and CEO of Epitome Energy, to the podium to talk a little bit about their plans to develop their project in Grand Forks. Before that, if I, if I could just take a, a moment, uh, Mayor Bochinsky, to recognize a few people. One who's not on my, our staff any longer, Brandon Bonback, who is with the EDC, who really spent a good amount of time with Dennis and his team, uh, really profiling the Grand Forks region and how Grand Forks could support that. And I also like to recognize Kevin Hatcher, who joined, really, the EDC about a week after this. We started working earnest with the company and really has done a great job in terms of, uh, providing information, packaging, uh, the necessary information for them to fully consider Grand Forks. So, with that, I'll get out of the way and really bring, uh, Mr. Egan up here. Again, founder and CEO of Epitome Energy for an announcement that I guess is no longer a secret, but we're thrilled to share that with you today. So, thank you.
Mr. Egan, the floor is yours. And I understand, uh, you have a little politics in your background. You're the, the former mayor of Red Wing. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, so I really do appreciate the opportunity and, and understand the, the important role that city governments play. And so, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff really do appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you today because we think from our perspective, it's a pretty exciting day. Um, we would like to be able to announce publicly that, uh, we would like to, uh, position Epitome Energy as your next agri, uh, uh, egg, uh, processing facility, uh, in the city of Grand Forks. Um, we think there is We think there is a great opportunity to talk about the soybean industry and what we believe is an important role in processing value add in this region. As you'll see on the slide, that over the last couple decades, the soybean industry and planted acres have grown well over 300%. And we are proposing to build a 42 million bushel soybean crush facility just north of Grand Forks. From an economic driver standpoint, we'll talk a little bit about the impact from construction side of things, as well as permanent, long-term employment. And then lastly, I think, coming from the background that I do and being a past mayor, had some great examples of community-minded businesses. If you look at Red Wing, Minnesota, Red Wing Shoe stands out in what their national brand and international brand means. But from a community standpoint, the giving back to the community, allowing their employees to participate in many activities, and really being that cornerstone of the community. We want to emulate what we have and what I have learned over the years in terms of involvement from a community states, a community-based business model. So again, we're seeking to build a 42 million bushel soybean crush facility. It'll process about 120,000 bushels of soybeans daily. Will operate 24/7, 350 days a year. What we will have out of that, we'll take the full soybean and we will make a meal and we'll have about 940,000 tons of meal. We'll have about 60 million gallons of crude degummed vegetable oil that then can go on for further processing in a number of industries, which we'll talk about. And then we have soybean hauls. It'll be a 400-plus million dollar investment that we'd like to make in the city of Grand Forks. One of the big questions that we get asked is availability of the soybean. Lots of news in North Dakota over the last couple of years in terms of value-add soybean crush facility with ADM's announcement and Spiritwood, and then most recently, the Castleton project and their announcement. Both of them have been permitted. We understand within the last week, the Castleton project has received their air permit for the state of North Dakota. And if you go out on their site right now, they've already started moving dirt. And they submitted their air permit, I believe, in February of this year. And so from an efficiency standpoint, we really like what this, the state of North Dakota has done. On this map, you'll see the Grand Forks in green, you'll see Castleton in purple, and then the Spiritwood in brown. That just is giving you a snapshot and for investors and individuals indicating the availability of soybeans in this marketplace. And so you'll see very little overlap in terms of availability of soybeans, which is a big driver for these projects. The site will have access, personally purchased about 55 acres, but will have access to some additional acres for future development. One of the things that a project like ours takes a look at is availability of infrastructure. So what roads are adjacent to it? What railroads do we have access to? On this site, we'll have access to BNFS railroad, and then in a short distance, we'll have the ability to access the CP rail for a transload facility. We do have and have talked to the utilities. So from a water perspective, natural gas, electric, we believe that all of the infrastructure is right here. Global demand for proteins, which is the soybean meal primarily, that is a growing industry in this region. We had a study done by a group called AURI. It's the Egg Utilization and Research Facility, talking about this market and the dynamics and what livestock is available for the soybean meal. We believe that's well over 300,000 tons of soybean on an annual basis. We've also had extensive conversations with the hog industry just north into Canada. They grow over 4 million hogs on an annual basis, and they all eat soybean meal. Will be the closest soybean processing facility to the north, or to the Canadian hog industry. And so lots of export going out on the California PNW, and the demand for protein again is growing exponentially. On the oil side, what's driving a lot of the soybean crush facilities is the renewable diesel industry. That really is by and far the largest use of any new soybean oil coming into the marketplace. It also can be used in the biodiesel industry. On Minnesota's side, the mandate for Minnesota using green fuels is a 20% blend of biodiesel for six months of the year, and that drops down into cold weather for 5%. And that continues to grow. And then obviously, food and cooking, the crafts of the world are all looking for soybean oil for mayonnaise and those types of products. This is a quick snapshot of the growth of the renewable diesel industry in the United States. These are existing and future plants, and you can see the types of names that are proposing these. Everything from BP to Marathon in the state of North Dakota, to Phillips 66, World Energy, and that list continues to grow. This industry is going to go from about a billion gallons on an annual basis, and some indicate that it could top 5 billion gallons of renewable diesel. One of the primary inputs for renewable diesel is soybean oil. Some of the market opportunities on the protein side, again, we talked a little bit about the livestock industry. We've got the Manitoba hog industry, we've got Jennie O. Turkey and the turkey industry and the, the layers. But you can see that on the livestock industry, this market continues to grow and the use of proteins and soybean hauls for the livestock industry. From a timeframe, with this announcement today, the clock has started. From our perspective, we would like to be able to submit our air permit no later than February of next year, which then gives us about a six-month window or so with the state of North Dakota to get our air permit. In the meantime, we've seen, as did Castleton, they started moving dirt without putting that infrastructure in place that you'd build on. But all of that, we would like to be able to get started second quarter of next year. And then it's about a 20-month construction process and be operational in crushing beans fall of '25, depending on any delays on equipment that could get pushed to spring of '26. But our target goal is to be operational fall of '25. On the project side, just a quick snapshot, about half of the $400 million will come in debt financing, the other half will come into equity. Some of our project partners and people that we've already talked to on the electric side, our legal team, Northern Plains Rail is the entity in which we're purchasing land from. They're actually here in the office or in the audience tonight. Our longtime CPA and financial forecaster is Christensen Associates. They've been in the industry and have probably 150 ethanol plants, biodiesel plants, crush facilities that they've worked on over the years. We anticipate getting our natural gas from Excel Energy and being our partner there. And then we've got somebody in the audience from StanTech. They're actually going to do the air permit, and they're just wrapping up the air permit for the Castleton project as well. Our leadership team, Scott Erdahl, has come on board and is working with us. He spent 15 years, 14 years at CHS in this industry and is really kind of the industry expert for soybean crush facility that we're leaning on. We also have not just industry people, but business people looking at the finances, looking at the project development side of things. We're also working and proud to say that Fagan Inc. out of Minnesota is actually going to be the EPC contractor. But we've also have talked to Grand Forks and East Grand Forks contractors and subcontractors for this project, and really are committed to using as many local people as we can with this project, as is Fagan. We'll actually be Fagan's fourth or fifth soybean crush facility of this size that they will have built in the last three years. And so they've got a great track record of being on time and on budget delivering projects like ours. And then we've got some national folks with Joe Jobe, who's on the national side of things from a policy standpoint. And then Rap Strategy and Todd Rap helping us out as well with some of our strategic thinking. Quick bio of Dennis Egan and who I am. I can answer that questions if you need to. Scott Erdahl, a quick snapshot of Scott and his background. Next steps, as was talked about, we'd like to be in front of you and ask for the green light to start a developers' agreement and really set that roadmap in terms of where do we go? How do we be successful working with Grand Forks in the state of North Dakota? I think I also want to hit on the fact that we are and have tried to develop a project, and many of you may have known this, in Crexton, Minnesota. We spent the last four years. You may say, well, why aren't you building there? We spent the last 16 months working with MPC on the air permit, and it's just the uncertainty in terms of where that was going to go. We knew we were going to get an air permit because they put that out to public comment, but it's the types of conditions that they wanted to put on a processing facility that no other plant in the United States would be looking at. And so we decided three, four months ago that we were going to look for an alternative site. We believe Crexton and North Dakota, 30 miles from our existing facility in which we had intended to build. So we today made the transition and wanted to publicly say that we would like to be able to join Grand Forks and your business community and be a part of it. So again, we'd be here asking for that development agreement and working with city staff and EDA folks to put together a project that is right for this community. And so that kind of wraps up the quick overview of who Epitome is and what our project entails. Happy to answer questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Egan. I'll open it up. I think probably two of the questions is going to be location, water usage. Do you got, I guess, give us some more insight of what you can on the location?
Yes, just a couple of miles north of here. It's on a parcel of land that is currently owned by Northern Plains Rail. They've got a couple hundred acres, and we're going to situate this project just on the south end of that site. Here's the actual site and parcel. We, early on, when talking with township supervisors, know that the potential of, of impact on 40 homes. So we moved all the way to the south end of this site, and we'll do everything we can to minimize any kinds of, of impact on this site to any existing residential homeowners.
Water usage, just going to use wastewater reuse?
Water usage, we're planning and have early conversations with the city that we would use 400,000 gallons a day of gray water coming from the city, and then cycle that through our process and then put that back into the wastewater stream. Based on your engineers, it sounds like that is a doable option for us. And again, reusing gray water from the city and not taking freshwater from the ground.
Thank you. Any questions from council at this time? Mr. Webber, please.
The 40 homes that you mentioned, those are in Rye or Faulkner Township or a combination of the two?
They're in Faulkner Township, but the project itself will be built on, in Rye.
Very good. And developments of this sort, it's very common, communities all across the country, for there to be some discussion about a tax financing of some form. I'm guessing that will be discussed next week with the discussion of the development agreement?
I think we've had some preliminary discussions, but nothing has been set in stone, and I think that'd be all part of that roadmap and the developers' agreement in terms of what that may or may not look like.
And we've heard concerns about workforce. How many jobs would this produce? And do you have any concerns about workforce, both during the construction phase and then operation?
Great question on both. 40 to 50, or 50 to 60 full-time permanent jobs, about a $5 million payroll with wages and benefits. We think they're going to be very good, solid, working family jobs. And then from a construction side of it, Fagan is fully aware, and they actually will be bringing some crew members from their other crush facilities. As they finish that up, they would end up transitioning to here, and then it's working with subcontractors in the region to supplement that workforce. We're very confident that this project will continue to move forward with the help of some of the consultants that we've hired that have deep roots in the crush facility and have opportunities to bring some of those individuals on as part of the management team.
And I'm curious about this. I know there's oil, soy oil. I didn't realize, the oil that you'd be producing, that can be used food or fuel?
It can. If you do it for the food grade, you have to refine it one more time, and they call it RBD oil. We'd be producing degummed, which would go into the renewable diesel. And instead of us refining it one more time, most of the new renewable diesel projects have a refiner on the front end and then putting it through their process to make greener diesel fuel. So we won't take on that CapEx, but would rely on our partners for the end users.
And my understanding on biofuels, you know, if you're burning down part of the rainforest to do this, it's, it's one thing. But what you're proposing is a very carbon-friendly, very sustainable energy process. This is fantastic news for our community. As far as city government, we, you know, there's good news, bad news all around, but I think that this would be upward pressure on some payroll in town, would help raise some wages. And I know that our retail businesses will be very pleased with that. Plus, an operation of this size would have tremendous multiplier effect throughout our manufacturing. So I look forward to the proposal next Monday. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Osowski, please.
Hi. So you stated that, was it the city of Crexton was going to put regulations on you? Or could you explain a little bit more about why you're switching locations?
It was the state of Minnesota and their MPC, it's their pollution control agency. When we went through that process with them, we're into month 16, and it just became very cumbersome and uncertainty in terms of ultimately what our responsibility would be. We were not looking for any type of, of process outside of what current crush facilities are currently doing in terms of air remittance on what they call PM 10 and PM 2.5. We've got brand-new technology, brand-new equipment. We're going to meet all of the federal and, and the state guidelines. We would have gotten an air permit in the state of Minnesota, but it was the length of time that it's taking to get there that we just said, you know what, for the long-term viability of this project, because we will be in the community for 50-plus years, we felt as though that changing locations, even though it was 30 miles, was advantageous to our equity partners and the people that would ultimately help us run this facility long-term. The good news is that even with a change of location, the reason we did this and looked at it in the first place was to have a positive impact on the farm community. You heard a little bit about basis improvements. Right now, all of the beans that are grown in northern Minnesota and, and most of, of North Dakota have been shipped out to the West Coast for export as a whole bean. And the farmer here is getting somewhere between 90 cents and $1.20 less per bushel than somebody in southern Minnesota or northern Iowa, only because you don't have the dynamics and the pressures and the competition. So bringing this type of project to this region is going to improve everybody's bottom line, and primarily the farmers. But then what does that do, right? It spins off into new equipment, it spins off into new trucks, cars, housing, all of those multipliers that we, we talk about. We did have a study done by the University of Minnesota Extension that talks about $300 million of economic impact for a facility of our size in the community in which they're located. And so it's not just the wages and the livable wages that we're going to create, it's also going to be all of those other multipliers. And we think that's a positive for any community in which we build in.
Thank you.
That's 300 million annually?
That's, yes, that's what the study showed.
Right.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, was that Mr. Veen?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yeah, for Mr. Egan or Mr. Phelan, the jurisdictional authority, this is in the county, it is not in the city limits? And that's where the authority comes from? If somebody could explain?
Mr. Veen, if you could repeat that question, please. Jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction. This is in the county, right? It's not in, in the city?
It currently not, is not in the city, but it would be, as part of the planning and zoning review, it would, we would request it to be annexed into the city because we are, we're, we are intending to serve it with city utilities, transportation corridors, city fire. So it would have a similar rent. Just so you know, this is, I don't know if you can see my screen here at all with the cursor.
John, can you? John, can you put the screen from the front up?
There you go. So this is 70th Avenue North. Our solid waste landfill is just to the south. So our solid waste landfill is here. You can, you can see Highway 81. You can see I-90 or I-29 right up here. And so what the request was is to move it as close as we can to the 70th Avenue North corridor, which also kind of places it nearer this Highway 81 corridor too. So I think one of the challenges we're going to have, and all these projects have challenges, right? So I've been here for several months now. So one of the requests is, hey, when in doubt, similar to the landfill, let's try to put it on the other side of Interstate. So it is on the west side of Interstate and not on the east side of Interstate. However, by doing that, there's other challenges. There's challenges with, we're going to have to improve all these transportation corridors. So 70th Avenue North is going to have to get improved. We have a landfill road on North 69th, but we also have, I think it's North 55th. And so I think one of the challenges of this project is to improve all these transportation corridors so that we can get truck traffic to the site and outside of the site. I think the really great part is we, we have a lot of wastewater to sell and we're treating it very well. So 400,000, we wish you were more because we are treating about eight to nine million gallons of wastewater a day. So it's a small percentage of what we're doing currently with this. You should also talk, Dennis, about you have had some meetings with the state of North Dakota. And I like to think that you're here because of the city of Grand Forks and this great community that we live in and that we want to be, we want to help you get across the finish line. I think the really other advantage is not only with the city of Grand Forks, but we partner so well with the state of North Dakota. And so we're partners on this project, similar to the previous project we talked about. Maybe talk about that, those meetings that you've had with the state of North Dakota.
Again, we have, we took a trip and met with the Commerce Commissioner, met with representatives from the Ag Department, met with the Bank of North Dakota. All of them, we laid out our project and looked at what those opportunities and partnerships might look like. We're in the midst of putting together what we think will be a very nice package. And what you will learn from us is that we view this as a partnership. We're not coming here just with a handout. We think that we're going to bring a lot to the table in terms of what this project looks like and we want to be here for the long haul. But we have had preliminary discussions. I would say probably more than preliminary discussions with the Bank of North Dakota. I think we've had two or three conversations with them. We've had two or three meetings with the Commerce Commissioner and then Department of Ag to make them aware of what we would like to do here in Grand Forks. And so all of that is coming together nicely.
If I could just say, thank you very much, Mr. Egan and Mr. Phelan. I appreciate that information.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Veen. Is there anybody else online? All right, anybody, any other further comments or questions for Mr. Egan tonight? All right, well, thank you for your presentation and we look forward to hearing more in the future.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
University Avenue Neighborhoods Project update?
Mr. Conlon.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky, members of city council. Let's see if I can get this pulled up. It's a lot of words up here and I don't expect anybody to read this as I go by any stretch. And I do have hard copies available for each of you if you'd like after this. But here today, basically, just for a summary, basically, of the great work that city staff, UND school of graduate studies and groups of UND students have done over the past year in the University Avenue neighborhood, neighborhoods. Essentially, this sort of stems from the 2019 University Avenue Corridor Study, which was funded by the Knight Foundation, the Community Foundation. Essentially do some community building in the neighborhood and to kind of highlight some projects that the residents would like to see and how they like to see the neighborhood kind of move forward. They've done a fantastic job really over the past year. It's been, that's a heavy lift. A lot of community building in one year is a heavy lift. So the group has done a fantastic job. And the goal of sort of this second phase of that University Avenue Corridor project is really to kind of reinvigorate that study post-COVID as well as, you know, evaluate the projects it suggests and maybe identify some new ones, moving things forward and generating the neighborhood buy-in for kind of ongoing engagement as we move forward, driving these ahead. So I'll kick it over to Shiloh, one of our, started as one of the students and continues to work on this project to kind of run through their work.
Hello. So over the course of the last, like 11 months, 12 months now, we've been meeting with the neighbors in the area that was the University Corridor project lined out in the Knight Foundation study. And while we've been doing so, we followed up on a bunch of the sort of suggestions which were in the report that you would have read in 2019. But we've also found that there's like slight ways in which the neighborhood wanted them to be adjusted to a more nuanced perspective for the folks living in that area, in addition to the folks traveling through that corridor as a transit area. And we've also come up through these discussions with the neighbors in the area, several other projects that they've suggested more recently that they're sort of interested in. So I know Andy is going to talk a little bit more about that still, but some of those things that they've been talking about are like fire hydrant painting activities with some of the schoolchildren at Valley Middle School and Winship Elementary. They've been talking about sort of similar things with murals. But we've also had really great conversations about some pedestrian safety measures and things like that. So in the last several months, we've had, you know, I think it says in the report here, you know, a dozen or more public meetings with the neighbors. We've had a lot of people sort of become engaged in that process. Some of the neighbors who are here today actually also have started leading some of these meetings on their own as well. So we're really excited, I think mostly just to see this kind of engagement from the neighborhood and to see those folks actually come here for this meeting also today. There are several of them, locally people, right? And so I'm glad to have been able to work on the project for the last year. And I think now I'll let Andy talk about some of the specific recommendations and projects that are sort of ongoing at this time.
So like I said, there's quite a few things in the, in the report. And I'll just keep it in the interest of time tonight. I'll keep it pretty high level. Shiloh mentioned some of the more community building type, type projects. The neighborhood did host a community event in University Park. They also, as you mentioned, the kind of partnership with Valley Middle School and some projects we hope to drive forward in the new year when it's warm enough to paint, as well as some, we hope, maybe larger scale or broader impactful projects. Two of the larger ones being extending or installing new streetlights from, it'd be North 20th Street down to the railroad tracks near Red Pepper. That area is wax lighting now. So we're excited to draw on some Knight Foundation, Community Foundation grant dollars to help buy down the cost of that or assist with the specials so that can be done with little to no cost to the neighbors in the area, which is really exciting. As well as looking at some of the other issues that the residents have kind of highlighted throughout the process, housing, rental code specifics and updates. That's, we're looking at that and bringing some of that stuff forward to you guys in early 2023. So a lot of, lot of different products I would just like to credit. The whole student team as well as, you know, Renee Carterell is here from the UND, or on behalf of UND and the Graduate School. They've done some really fantastic work and we're excited to bring, continue that energy moving into the new year as well as bring forward some of the implementation measures for each of those projects and others as the residents kind of bring those forward into the new year. So I will kick it over to Renee to speak to the UND involvement piece in this a little bit and then I'll, I'll wrap this up.
Hello, I'm Renee Carterell. I am a faculty member at the Political Science Public Administration Department. And I just want to thank all of you for your involvement in this project. It's really been a great partnership between the city of Grand Forks, University of North Dakota and the Community Foundation and the Knight Foundation, which is represented by the Community Foundation. Becca was here, but she had to leave and so she was not able to stay until our presentation. From UND's perspective, it's been a really wonderful project, bringing graduate students into this project and allowing them to experience firsthand how to work in a community has been very successful. And we've seen a lot of growth in the students. So as academic advisor, that's always my first priority is to make sure the students are having a really good experience. And I can say that they, as the others have said, have performed really well and have gone on to do other things and use those skills. In fact, you hired one of them. So thank you for hiring her. And it also aligns really well with one of the key goals of the Knight Foundation, which is to retain local talent. So in so many ways, this project, beyond the work it's doing inside of the community, has been a really beneficial project for UND, helps it connect better with the community, for the city, for the, the community members and for the graduate students also. And just a special shout out to the city employees. They have been wonderful working with us. They have done, always been there to answer questions, always been willing to work with the students. So it's been really, really a wonderful partnership. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Renee did a fantastic job. Just wanted to credit again the Knight Foundation, Community Foundation for their, you know, generous support of this effort as well as bringing forward some grant dollars to bring some of these, these ideas to life. So credit to them as well as again the UND Grad School and Renee for getting us this far and then of course the students for the work they've done. So I'm happy to stand for any questions, if anyone has them, otherwise that's all we have.
Any questions for Mr. Conlon or Mr. Weber?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, it may be one of the goals of the, the project to, for talent retention. That is one of the top goals for the city as well, workforce development, talent retention. So Ms. Prevedy, nice to have you on, join the team here as a part of this project. Fantastic. Mr. Conlon, the city has had a great deal of involvement in this project. I'm assuming that that will, that'll continue?
Yeah, so there's, we are having discussions as to how we kind of support this. There's, there's the implementation piece, right, of a lot of the products that the residents have identified this year. But in, in terms of the sort of ongoing outreach or ongoing support, we're talking with, with UND as well as the Knight Foundation, Community Foundation to figure out what that sort of looks like or should look like moving forward. Factoring in the, sort of the perspectives of the residents is how they'd like to see that move forward. So we're, as with so much, that is sort of the theme with all this, is there's a lot of momentum, we think, that's been generated, a lot of positive steps have been taken and a lot more to come, I think, in implementing them.
And this is just presentation only tonight, so you're not looking for a motion, but just a general green light to, to please move forward with this?
Right. There'll be, for, like I mentioned, for the street lighting project or, or, you know, we mentioned banners in there, there's a variety of different projects as we move forward to the implementation piece that you might come, you know, see us again. Or if you don't see us, those items may be informed by sort of the work that's been done here, certainly not entirely driven by it, for instance, the rental code or building code updates that we anticipate you'll see in early 2023. That is a process that's going on as, you know, of its own accord, but this process is also helping to inform that. So we'll see more of us as kind of a project by project basis.
And you've mentioned lighting. Is that just a utility lighting or is that decorative lighting, a combination of the two?
It'd be street lighting. We hope to have some decorative elements, I guess, on the banner. I hope they can have banners and support banners for that community pride piece. But the street, it'd be new street lighting, drawing on that sort of safety theme, drawing out from the outreach with the neighborhood.
Fantastic. And we've always talked about the University Avenue Corridor, but the corridor is more than just a street, it's, it's a neighborhood, the University Park neighborhood. And so can we anticipate that the fire hydrant painting, these other things that we might be hearing about, is that, that's for the whole neighborhood we're talking about?
Right, yep. The, we actually, you know, as you see on the front of the report there, the neighborhood kind of, or the group landed on the University Park neighborhoods, plural sort of designation just because, you know, it feels like multiple neighborhoods kind of overlap into one, but also, you know, one cohesive area. The street lighting project, of course, will be, you know, on University Avenue, but other projects, like you mentioned, the fire hydrant piece, we anticipate to kind of spread into the neighborhoods around, not just on the corridor there.
So the lighting is not through, throughout the neighborhood, it's just along the corridor?
It'd be just on University Avenue. The new street lighting would just be on University Avenue itself. So that's the project we're proposing right now.
Is that phase one with possible additional phases in the future?
That's the, that's the, I guess, the only phase that we had in mind right now, based on the conversations we've had with, with residents, that seemed to be the largest problem area, I guess.
Okay.
On the most traffic street. So that's the one we're focusing now. But we are, Shiloh kind of mentioned this, alluded to this, is that other safety improvements, whether it's crosswalks or that sort of thing, we're looking at that kind of across the whole neighborhood as well.
Great, great. And that's a wonderful thing about this project is that it is being driven in large part by city, university, but largely by the neighborhood reference.
Right, yeah. Should have credited them earlier. We do have Jennifer Tarland, Peggy Lucky, and I believe Barb Knight somewhere. They've really, they've carried a big chunk of the mantle throughout this project and excited to continue working with them.
Real good. And I don't want to keep going on and on, but we'd, we'd seen a report from the Knight Foundation some, a few years back, 2019 maybe, and council approved that, including its recommendations. One of the recommendations that I recall with specific interest was the idea of possibly rezoning all along there to bring in more retail, more neighborhood gathering places, coffee shops, ice cream shops, whatever it might be. But that, I don't know that that rezoning is really necessary to get that started. There are areas with our micro PUD process or others where that could already start happening. But part of my understanding is that, that, you know, it doesn't, we often talk in economic development terms that it doesn't pencil out without some skin in the game from the city, some support from the city. And I anticipate that that will be the case here as well. So I look forward to learning more. Very good.
All right, Ms. Osowski, please.
Thank you. I just have a small comment. I have attended a few of your guys' meetings, not recently, my apologies, but I think you guys do a great job and you guys really work hard. And so thank you.
All right, anything further from Mr. Conlon? All right, thank you. I'm guessing there's not a snowmobile route down University Corridor. That's a segue here to the next, next item.
2022, 2023 snowmobile routes?
Mr. Mackey. I guess I'd like to make a few comments here, Mr. Mack, before you start. I think the city's got a bit of an archaic process for this ordinance and a lot of the council members didn't really, you know, get a chance to be involved or to be informed on it. I think we still need to look at that ordinance and how it's, how it's done because it puts a lot of pressure on the, on the PD to come up with the perfect solution. Certainly the Greenway is something that everybody wants to be able to use. We all pay tax dollars to maintain it. I'd really like to see an opportunity for the user groups to get together here, whether it's this year or something we can, you know, work for going into the future. So they, they've all got a chance to give opinion and hear each other out and see if there's something palatable here because I think the process has been tough for, for people to understand on, on both sides of it. So I guess I'd be, you know, open to council and having council look at how they want to do this process in the future because really you're going to set it and it's, I mean, it's set for a decade or two. And when's the last time it was really changed? You just announce it kind of yearly? Has it been, has it changed much in the last decade or two?
Mayor Bochensky and members of the council, the snowmobile route really has had very minor changes in the last 28 years that I've been here. You kind of stole some of my thunder, Mayor Bochensky, as far as the process itself. The chief of police is designated as a person that names the route and approves the route. We primarily look at it on the public safety side of things. The route that did come forward this time, we approve of as a safe environment, much more safe than what we currently have. But obviously, as was mentioned last week, there was a lot of controversy and maybe too quick of a rollout. The process itself maybe didn't have enough voices in it. Members of the snowmobile group and the police department, city engineer and Greenway spent a lot of time working on that plan. But again, the process it seemed, itself seems to be somewhat flawed. And our goal for the short term is to establish a snowmobile route that can get some use still during this riding season. You know, snowmobiles have been active for the last few weeks. We've had some, some pretty decent snowfall. So the route that the chief will be approving and advertising as of tonight and tomorrow essentially takes out that controversial portion going through the Greenway. It also takes out the pre-existing 42nd Street north-south corridor as that was deemed not to be ideal just because of the high levels of traffic that are utilizing that corridor. So we are essentially that corridor. So, we are essentially leaving the north end east-west trails intact that have been in that state for, you know, 20-plus years. And on the south end, we're limiting it to just really accessing the south end gas stations on South Washington. So, really just a quick in and out of town, and then leaving it up to the snowmobile operators to navigate back either through the county or whatever route they want to get through the city. Our goal is to continue working on this, but the first step in that is probably refining the process, working with the city attorney's office, and and finding really the the route forward with this, so that more input can be obtained. And honestly, maybe more the snowmobile group meeting with those that are in that area or are utilizing that and seeing if common ground can be met, because that portion is somewhat lacking. But for the short term, our intention is to designate the route, as I described, and as in the information packets that went forward, with the goal of revamping the process and working with stakeholders to see if we can find a safe north-south route, or perhaps University Avenue, as has been suggested already. So, I I stand for any questions anyone may have. But we feel comfortable moving forward with what we've presented.
Do we have a solution? I mean, what's with the manpower we've currently got, some of the the users that, you know, have caused problems by using it, you know, whether it's UTVs, ATVs, snowmobiles, or other that that, you know, O'Donnell, Mr. O'Donnell, I think, had said it earlier, any way to 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 keep a better eye on that or have a process where, you know, you have some sort of way to police that, I guess?
You know, what's helpful is when community members come forward and describe what they're seeing. Oftentimes, we hear anecdotally that, you know, for the last three weeks, snowmobiles have been running through my neighborhood nonstop. Let us know when it's happening. That's what we would encourage members to do. And when we advertise the snowmobile route, we'll do that as well. We'll encourage community members to let us know. If we know that it's generally happening on weekends between this time and this time, we can have officers out on the Greenway. We have snowmobiles assigned to the police department. We can be out there, stop them, make sure that they're aware of where the trails are, and if necessary, enforce it with city code violations and so forth. But, you know, our goal is really education as best we can, and and enforcement as a secondary. And we'll certainly work that way. But we need to know really when they're coming through. We could, we could have officers out there, you know, five days a week. And if it's not the right five days a week or the right times during that, those days, you know, we're not going to be able to be very beneficial.
All right. Well, thank you. I know misuse can definitely kind of ruin it for everybody.
Absolutely.
I don't know if council wants to discuss tonight the process. This, what's the deadline? Under current ordinance, this needs to be set prior to the year, to year's end, or where are we at in that process?
Well, the snowmobile route itself was supposed to be set December 1st. So, I think we kind of need to go with what we have. Again, the current process designates the chief as the person to name the the trail. So, there's nothing saying that we can't amend the trail as we move forward. If we find a process and we can come up with a north-south corridor, nothing's saying the chief can't redesignate that. Or, better yet, if we come up with a better process, whoever that entity is, whether it's city council or or, you know, what have you, you know, that can be redesignated during the year. It's just, we kind of have to designate the route at this point.
So, really, right, tonight, this is almost informational item, for the council's not really, has any ability to act, per se?
That's correct. And that's, and that's based on city code. Really, at this point, doesn't require city council to vote on it and approve it.
All right. Well, I guess if council has any other comments they want to make, Mr. Weigle, please.
Real quick, Mayor. I do think it's something that we need to look at and and bring the two groups in the community together and decide what's best for for both, because it is public property. Others want to use it. So, I think it is important that we can find a path forward for everybody to to be happy. And then, maybe even the other processes is, do we want the chief of police setting the route? To me, that's almost a policy decision, which should fall on all of us. I'm not saying that I'm super excited about doing that, but at the same time, I I may not be the best to to have the chief setting that at this point, when we have seven policymakers up here. So, maybe that's something to look at for the future.
All right. Any further comments for council for now? Mr. Weber?
I would agree with the with Mr. Weigle. I would hope that we could review that ordinance. I understand the concern regarding the lack of safety along 42nd, that that the situation has changed. But in addition to how we currently set the route, I think we also need to look at the the fines for for misuse right now. $26 is is meaningless, and it it causes trouble for enforcement as well. So, I'd hope that we could bring both of those issues back. Thanks.
All right. Anything further for deputy chief? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you for your time.
Come on to item four, public hearings and second reading of ordinances.
Public hearing and determination of protest on project number 8562, district number 767, paving and street lighting, Southern Estates, 93 subdivision. Project number 8563, district number 593, Box Culvert for Southern Estates, 93 subdivision.
Thank you. And this one was postponed from November 21st. So, I will, at this time, open the public hearing on item 4.1, parts A and B, if anyone's here to speak on that. All right, seeing nobody, open it up to council for discussion or approval. Got a motion to approve from Vice President Weber, and then a motion seconded by President Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. On to five action items. I know we've got, let's see here, item 5.2 and 5.4. Administration would like to pull any other items on there that council like to take a look at this evening for further discussion. Mr. Veer, Mr. Sandy, do you have anything other than items 5.2 and 5.4?
I do not.
Okay. I'd be looking for approvals then of items 5.1, 5.3, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.8, 5.9, and 5.10. I get a motion to approve those. Get a motion from Mr. Cavami, a second from Mr. Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. To be on to 5.2 and 5.4.
Approval of pipeline right-of-way easement to Agassiz Water Users District.
All right, Mr. Gosted, you're going to take this one. This is a new item that didn't make the call. Is that correct?
That that's correct. It didn't make the call, because we just finalized the negotiation over the course of last week. I just want to thank Mr. Eden, John Eden's here with Agassiz Real Water, and their attorney, Laura Cobb, were able to work through and negotiate the the terms of an easement very easily, and they're great to work with. Couple of items, just to note, is, as I understand, this is a water line that that Agassiz wants to install to serve countrywide sanitation. It looks to me that there is a depiction, basically, of of the area that that the pipeline will be located. It looks like they're connecting up with an existing water line and running along 69th Street, or North 69th Street. The the easement is pretty standard, in that, a couple of things I want to point out is they do have to restore the property after they install the pipe. They have to meet all the standards and conditions for installing a water pipeline and keep it in repair. And and they've got the liability with respect to the water pipeline, if anything would happen to go wrong, you know, with respect to its operation. The obligation that we have is just to make sure that we keep seven feet of topsoil over the the water line, so it doesn't freeze up. Other than that, it's pretty standard, and I would recommend that council, excuse me, approve the easement.
All right. Mr. Gost, any questions related to item? Got a motion to approve from Mr. Weigle. Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Weber. I think that's just a mouse. Did you, anybody online, any comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Classification and compensation study consulting agreement with Condry Associates Incorporated.
Thank you, Ms. Pavet. I understand there was a productive meeting following up from last week. So, why don't you take it away, please?
All right. Good evening, Mayor Botenski, President Sandy, and members of the council. I'm back before you this evening to seek approval to hire Condry and Associates to review and update this classification and compen, or classification and compensation system for the city. The current plan has been in place for over 20 years, and it's due for an overhaul. Since last week, we were able to schedule a meeting between the city council members and the employee representatives group to discuss the challenges with the current system. Thank you to the council members that were able to make the meeting on such short notice, and thank you to all the employee representatives who attended. There was 100% attendance by the employee representatives, and each department was represented. Employees were able to articulate the current plan, salary plan challenges, including employees rarely being able to achieve midpoint, negligible performance increases in past years, and pay compression issues. There were a number of positive exchanges during the meeting. Immediately prior to the joint meeting, the employee reps group did make a motion to support moving forward with the consultant, Condry and Associates. The motion was passed unanimously. I appreciate Council President Sandy's concern regarding the implementation of a new system that is different from our current system, and that, for many years, has served us well. We can work with the consultant to recalibrate components of our plan that we like and are serving as well. And I believe that the time and knowledge necessary to update the compensation system is beyond what the city's current staff have the ability to offer. So, using a consultant will provide the city with subject matter experts that are able to take an objective look at the plan and spend time with employees to get honest, objective information, and in turn, provide the city with multiple ways to move forward, to implement a plan that fits with the pay strategy that we will identify. I'll stand for any questions from council that that you may have. Otherwise, I'm hopeful for a motion to support entering into a contract with Condry and Associates.
Thank you. Open up to council for their suggestions, comments? Yep. Please, let's, President Sandy, why don't you go first online, then we'll go to Ms. Losowski.
Well, I was going to make the motion to approve hiring Condry and Associates, but I'm certainly open if others have comments or questions. I knew Ms. Losowski had some questions. So, if you want to start with her, I'm happy to to lead my turn. Thank you.
Sounds good. Ms. Losowski, please.
So, I apologize. I feel like these questions should have been my first week, but I was a little overwhelmed when you proposed everything in the first week. So, so the midpoint, you take 10 cities, and you you average those out, and that's the midpoint, correct?
12 cities are our comparators, and each position is tied to a benchmark. Some positions are benchmarks, but essentially, yes, for a benchmark position, we would survey those 12 cities, and then the average of those 12 cities would become the midpoint.
Okay. And how did you pick those 12 cities? Because it seems like there's, we were on the, most of them have a larger population than Grand Forks.
Yes. And actually, that is a change to the salary plan that we implemented a couple of years ago. Due to challenges, we were actually having regarding consistent salary data. Prior to that, we had over 33 entities that we surveyed for various data, including the overall market look, plus our benchmark data. And so, each year, we'd get a different set of responses from a different set of entities. And so, it made wild variations in the market, in the market data and the benchmark data. So, we were trying to narrow it down to a smaller pool that we could get consistently year after year.
And when someone, when a new position comes up, is is the salary at midpoint? Or how does, how is the midpoint with with the starting wage?
How do we hire? So, essentially, we can hire anywhere between 80% of midpoint up to midpoint itself. We can, in special circumstances, hire over the midpoint for hard-to-fill positions. We rarely do that. Different departments hire at different points from 80 to 100. For example, our police officers, we hire at 85% of the midpoint for all new hires. Once they pass the law enforcement academy, they're, they bump up to 87% of midpoint. Similar for our fire suppression personnel. But, say, an equipment operator, we typically hire at 80% of midpoint.
And does midpoint ever go down? Like, does anyone ever get a decrease?
No.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Losowski. All right, Mr. San, President Sandy, do you want to make a motion?
Certainly. And those were very good questions by Ms. Losowski. I know she and I had a conversation about these or this specific topic over the weekend. You know, I've been working the salary plan for a dozen years now, and it doesn't get less complicated every year. It gets more complicated. And certainly, I've always thought that our goal should be to get employees, at some point in their career, to midpoint and keep them there. And it sounds like, based upon what I was told at our meeting last week, we only have one employee out of our 500 or so employees. We have one that's actually at the midpoint. So, I'm not, I'm not convinced that our salary plan totally isn't working, but I recognize that it certainly has some difficulties. And I think having an independent consultant looking at it to help us refine, or at least make sure that we're benchmarking correctly against our peer communities, is a good idea. I I will say that I want to make sure that the consultants also visit with the council members to get an understanding of where the council members are, what they're thinking of, and not just myself, but all the council members, because I think it's important that, and we should all be heard in this in this conversation. So, with that, Mayor, I will make the motion to approve hiring Condry and Associates for the salary plan study.
Thank you. We got a motion, and we got a second from Mr. Cavami. Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Pavet. The rare clap. There you go. All right. So, we'll move on to six information items.
Statement of changes in cash balances as of October 31st, 2020.
Thank you. And on to seven, approval of minutes and bills.
Vendor list and engineers estimates as presented.
We got a motion to approve that. We got a motion from Mr. Cavami, second from Mr. Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Minutes, July 5th and 18th, 2020.
Thanks again. Let's see, you got two more on there, so we're catching up. So, I appreciate the work of the finance department. We got a motion to approve as is. Got a motion from Mr. Weigle, second from Vice President Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. On to eight, city administrator comments. Mr. Fealan.
Mayor Botenski, members of city council. I'm working on two joint meetings. So, I have reached out to East Grand Forks regarding, we were going to have the River Crossing meeting. Right now, and I'll I'll send you meeting notices when we finalize this, but we're, we're going to target right now at East Grand Forks City Hall. It would be Wednesday, January 4th at 5:00 PM. It's the, it's the tentative date for that follow-up meeting. And then also, I've been working with the Grand Forks Park District on that quality of life feasibility study. And we are targeting a joint meeting with our, our Grand Forks Park District Board for Tuesday or Wednesday, January 10th or 11th. And that would be another 5 o'clock meeting. And so, that would be where we would have the consultant there, and they'd review that quality of life. And when I say quality of life, that's that turf, courts, aquatics, et cetera. And so, we would have both boards there, and you would review that. And that's one of those studies where we agreed to work together on that. So, those are two joint meetings. And to the employees, we have great employees here. And so, I have never been, maybe I've lost some memory, but I've never been so proud of a city council and city employees for getting together last week. And that was probably one of the most positive meetings that I've been part of. And I was really proud of both the employees and you, as city council members. So, thank you. And let's hope we could have more of those meetings in the future.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fealan. Move on to mayor and city council member comments. Mr. Weigle, any comments this evening, sir?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Losowski. Ms. Losowski?
Can I make a motion to turn on the heat on Monday?
That is, that is out of order, but we got to save the the taxpayers money. So, you're going to have to bring a blanket. Well, I think that'll be resolved in the remodel. going to have to bring a blanket. Well, I think that'll be resolved in the remodel. Hopefully, they can do something in the meantime. Anything further? All right. Mr. Kavami?
No, thank you.
Mr. Veen, any comments this evening?
Nope. Nothing. Thank you.
All right. Vice President Weber?
Just a quick note that several of us will be in Bismarck the next couple of days for the governor's budget announcement and to strategize with our colleagues in the North Dakota League of Cities and some other high-level meetings. And you were in Bismarck today, and you're heading back down there tomorrow?
I'll be down there on Thursday. I won't be there tomorrow, but I've got to take a day off.
All right. Thanks.
All right. President Sandy, any comments this evening?
Just a couple. First of all, I think we should look into those police body cameras and whether you agree with what happened on the railroad tracks or not. If we actually are having an issue with our body cameras in our police department not working and we're tampering with the videos, we should certainly look into that. I wanted to mention that Mr. Moclear questioned why we didn't go to China to look at the Chinese fufang plants. And perhaps he forgets that they had a three-week quarantine at minimum to go to China, which they still have a quarantine to go to China for a couple of weeks. So I don't think any of us were interested in committing a month of our time to go over for a three-hour tour of a plant. I did want to, one last thing. I was pretty disappointed in the, in the snowmobile club today. I heard on the radio some pretty outlandish conspiracy theories stated by leadership of their, of the snowmobile club specifically related to Kim Greendale. And I wanted to personally apologize to her for what they were saying or what he was specifically saying about her on the radio today because she's doing the job that she, she's doing what she is supposed to be doing. So I was pretty disappointed anyway. I'll end with, "Cooberbera" was one of my favorite songs that I sang when I was in choir as a young boy. So it was great seeing Grand City Children's Choir today open up and sing the pledge. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, President Sandy. Not too much for me. We'll be down on Thursday in Bismarck, working with the DOT, trying to get that 47th interchange and that 42nd underpass at De Meers, continuing to move forward and getting into session. So we'll have a lot of city staff and council members and myself. We'll spend quite a bit of time there the next four months, certainly an important time when legislative session's going on. With that, I'll echo Roland Reimers and say it is Christmas season, so I hope everybody can enjoy themselves and get some time with family and laugh and have some fun in the snow, hopefully, if it's not too freezing. So that's all I got for tonight. So I look for a motion to adjourn. Motion from Mr. Weigel, second from Ms. Losowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.